Good morning. This is the time and place set for the regularly scheduled monthly meeting of the Taxe Cab Authority Authority Board. And it is Wednesday, August 16th, hours 9:30. We're at 3300 West Sahara Avenue, Street 400 in Nevada Room in Las Vegas, Nevada. Records should reflect that present are Vice Chairman Soderbergh, Member Decker, Member Pio, and myself, Dan Reese, the Chair. So we do have a forum. Records should also reflect the draft that's been excused because of a court requirement that we have here today. You would all please join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Chair, has this meeting been noted to be posted in importance for Nevada law?
Yes.
Thank you. Second item of business today is to take public comment pursuant to Nevada law. This is set on our agenda so that members of the public may bring matters to our attention within our jurisdiction. No action may be taken on such information or requests, but we're happy and welcome anybody of the public that would like to address. Seeing no one in Las Vegas, do we have anybody participating remotely? No remote participants, so I will close public comment. Item three on our agenda is review of the Board of Board Meeting Minutes of July 20. Mr. Armstrong and I are the only two other than the memory graph he was here today who were here. We did not have a forum. The minutes proved us the only person who could act. Item four is industry discussion. Set on our agenda so that we can take comments and suggestions and questions from members of the industry, matters of importance per view. And we'll open it up if there's any member of the industry that would like to address. Seeing a massive rush to the table, close agenda item four. That takes us to staff reports.
Mr. Chair, before you close agenda items, does that mean that everything's good?
Business is booming. They have cars. They can buy cars. I'm key to worry. Good attempts.
Did anything else on agenda? What was that? Staff report. Administrator Armstrong, take it away.
A request was made for both this body as well as others to understand the different divisions within the Taxe Cab Authority. The first group that's going to be up in terms of in the box at this particular point in terms of a presentation that we'll give to you will be our licensing department. And Curtis Mel has had our licensing department, and he will take it from here in terms of he has a power point presentation for both the industry as well as you in order to understand a little bit more intimately what our licensing department does. Curtis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the record, I am Curtis Mel. I am a management analyst with Taxe Cab Authority, and I have been tasked with talking to you today about the front office and our permitting process. So I have a little presentation with my assistant. We will get through this. That screen turns on or is that screen something? We can try that one. It's the same as in the booklet that they have provided as well.
Okay. So it's not different.
Yeah, no, it's not any different.
Thank you.
Okay.
The front office. Sorry, sorry, Curtis. Mr. Chair, for the record, I will say it does show that we have eight participants that are online.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So I just want, we skipped through that a public comment. It was stated that there were no participants. I just wanted to make sure we gave them.
There was no comments.
Yeah, there was no comments.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
You know, I'm not sure why that one is staying. Okay. The front office. The front office staff are the main providers of customer service to the taxicab drivers and to the public who visit the office. They check in all the people, they verify paperwork, process and issue all types of permits, process citations and payments, administer the English test, and run fingerprints. This is just some of what they do. There's also a lot of backend items that they get done as well. There were over, last year, there were over 13 million cab rides. Over 10,000 people came into the TA. We issued over 4,000 permits, and there are currently in 23, there are over 4,400 permitted drivers. And between 800 and 900 people come into the TA monthly to interact with our five employees. Some topics, what I want to talk about, about what you're going to need to become a driver, the process itself, the end result, and then the future going forward. Becoming a cab driver. This is what it takes to get behind the wheel of a cab. To start, the applicant must bring with them several items just to begin the process. They must have a referral from the company wanting to hire or lease to them, an acknowledgement or certificate that they have attended a driver's awareness program that the company's put on and that has been approved by us. They also need their Nevada driver's license and a three-year DMV printout. And finally, they also need all five pages of their medical examiner's certificate, their DOT medical report. Topic two, the process. What to expect when you come into the TA office. When you come to the TA.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So to start with, on these four items that they have to have, they have to bring them in physically?
Yes.
And we don't have a mechanism where they could log on, somehow provide them electronically or them not electronically available?
You're jumping ahead.
Oh. Okay.
We currently do not have means to do it.
I'll pull my jet.
Currently, everything is done physically with them walking into the agency. They have to physically bring that stuff in, and then we do copy it into the system and digitize it.
One of the, where does the DOT medical report come from? Where do they go to get that?
They go to a certified physician that can provide that. There is the website available for that on the DOT that we have listed on the website that should give the list of all the physicians that can provide. All right, once they come into the office, you will be greeted by our friendly staff. First, they will verify why you were there and if you have the required documents. Next, you will fill out an application packet consisting of several required forms that need to be filled out completely. Then it is required that you take and pass a 20-question English test. And from there, they will run a preliminary background check and check over your application. The end result. If you pass that, you will pay the $91.25 fee, and they will take your fingerprints and submit them for the FBI background. You will then be given a 90-day temporary permit while we wait for your FBI background to return. When the reports return, our investigator will review them. If passed, you will then return and receive your permanent permit. This permit is good for one year from the start of the process. Please do not let it expire, or you will have to go through this whole process again because expired permits are not renewable. Topic four, the future. This is what is to come. Starting September 1st of 2023, the Taxe Cab Authority will no longer be doing fingerprints in-house. We require them to be done and approved vendor. The required form will be filled out and submitted to us, and all this information is available in our office or on our website. We are working towards updating the forms and applications, and they'll all be available as well on the website. And by year's end, we hope to have the ability to be able to submit the applications and required documents online in order to start the process. We are currently developing a new, more practical English test, and we're also developing a portal to be able to take payments online. Additionally, we are also trying to update our whole computer system. In summary, the taxi industry is an ever-evolving business. Here at the Taxe Cab Authority, we are changing along with the industry to try to streamline the process, develop new technology along to grow along with it.
So as to the fingerprinting process, and I should probably make transparent that I'm the one that requested this presentation of the administrator. As not, not that, I mean, he selected the department, but I want us to have a presentation on each of the departments and how they're functioning. As to the fingerprints, I'm assuming this is going to be similar to the way the gaming controls is gone, right?
That's correct.
So the gaming control board, a number of years, got out of the fingerprinting business and now approves certain vendors as being an approved vendor because they are comfortable with their process. And if they're on the approved vendor list, you go get your fingerprints there and they're submitted electronically to the FBI. So the thought processes, the four pieces of data that have to come in could ultimately be electronically submitted?
Yeah, hopefully, we can get to where we're receiving them in an email-type fashion or an online portal that we can have that information there so we can start the process and then get as far as we can without them physically being there and then schedule a time more, you know, be able to possibly take appointments to when they can come in so we can make more of an even flow coming through the office.
Sometimes hard to control the number of people that come into the office at any one time, and we have to make adjustments sometimes on the fly as to whether or not we can take any more individuals or things of that nature. We're hoping that if they can do more things at their companies that building in the completed packet will have less problems with the materials that are submitted because if the application's online, one of the reasons why we wanted to do that was so that you could ask your colleagues at the taxicab company to help you if you needed help in terms of certain things or some things that you may not, may or may not understand, that that could be a help in terms of what's happening as opposed to coming to the Taxe Cab Authority, us giving you a package, you have to fill out the package there, we have to explain the package there and things of that nature. That we want to have a partnership with the industry in terms of doing that process. And I think that that will help both with the drivers and their comfort level as well as the companies in terms of us being more efficient and being able to process more people and get more applications done.
So I, you and I have not talked about this. I applaud that. I refer to gaming because it's an area I deal with every day in my life. Number of years, work cards got taken away from county sheriffs and was all centralized at gaming. And what you're describing is essentially how work cards are now processed. You go to your employer, there's computers there, there's a person who logs you on and brings the portal up, and basically you do all of the input of your application information at the employer into the database through the gaming control board. And there's a, the employer's basically making sure that the employee understands what they're doing and is giving, you know, giving all the information so that it flows through and the work permit gets issued. So that makes a lot of sense to me. Not that the employers have, well, employers have to do that in gaming, but not that they would have to.
We're not requiring them to do that. We're strongly suggesting because one of the biggest problems that I've heard is the issue of drivers understanding what they're filling out, getting to our office, getting a packet, some of them having issues with language in terms of understanding exactly what they need to do. One of the biggest areas that we have problems with is, we have the section on the form, all the sections that trip people up is a section that specifically says, "We need to know everything about your background." And I don't, I don't know how to say that more strongly. That means that if you think about it and you had it, you need to, you need to put it down. That does not necessarily create a situation in which it's a disqualifier of you in terms of what you put down on the form. And that we need people to understand that we're not big bad ogres in terms of what we're doing here. We just are asking that you tell us everything we need to know, and then once you tell us everything we need to know. Then we can make determinations if we have to on a case-by-case basis in terms of saying, well, you know, that this maybe happened five years ago or 10 years ago or something of that nature, and we can grant an exception, but we can't grant an exception to something that we don't know.
Other questions?
I have a question. When you say more practical English exam, explain what you believe practical is.
Our current version of test generally has been called into question several times because there's a level of questioning on there that people don't seem to understand that it's a comprehension test, but it is often asking about a bear in a cave and what that bear is doing in that cave. So we're trying to look at other ways to make it more practical, that it's more job-related and the verbiage that they're going to be using in their day-to-day and not so much about the hibernating tactics of a grizzly bear.
Okay. Since there's not a lot of hibernating bears in Las Vegas.
No. It is a comprehension test, and it is part of it that they're supposed to be able to comprehend, but at the end of the day, we just need them to be able to understand our roads, our road systems, the symbols out there, names of casinos, and corresponding directions and everything, you know. We do need them to be able to speak English so they know that there's issues as well, but I think that we can come up with a better test than what we currently are using.
For the vice chairman's benefit, this would be like, we don't have to ask law students about the rules in Sullivan, Shelley's case from '69 anymore.
We've had a few driver appeals here, and my recollection is we've only had one individual that spoke English, yet the other people seemed to pass the English, our English test, but they didn't speak lick of English. So my thought is it's maybe too easy, or there are people out there who've memorized it, and they're helping their friends by telling them what to say because it's apparently not random enough. And so, yeah, there's obviously, they had to bring interpreters, and when they were talking, it's clear that they didn't speak English, yet they somehow passed that test. And I think that's a problem. I would agree that, yeah, questions about bears in caves probably doesn't have much applicability, but it also seems to me, the other problem is it's easily memorized and then out there. So people come in, having done the memorization, they still don't speak English, they still don't comprehend, they just know what to regurgitate out onto the thing, and then they pass.
We have varied it up over the years with different, rotating them around, you know, in versions and the answers and stuff because they're, like anything, eventually it does get memorized. But an issue that we've run into is somebody that's passed the test 10 years ago doesn't ever have to take the test again if they've never let their permit expire. So now we've run into an issue if they, if they, if their permit expires, now they have to go through the whole process again, and they hit that test, and some of them are not passing them. Okay. So it is, we're trying to catch it now because we know that it is an issue out there in the industry that we do have some people that are running into this, so we're trying to adjust for that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Is that because 10 years ago, there wasn't an English test for that?
No, no, it was.
Or it just changed.
It changed, yeah. I don't think the bear was hibernating then. There were some different questions. It was, it has evolved over, over the years, different tests and everything. But like I said, if they've been a good driver for, in good standing for, you know, even 20, 30 years, they've never had to take that test again. But now we've implemented that if they expire, they have to go through the whole process again, and that includes the test.
I'm not going to disagree with Vice Chairman Soderbergh, other than to observe sometimes the use of English while being a taxi driver is not quite the same as English when they're being queried by us.
True.
So there's maybe a difference there where one would want to have an interpreter.
Yeah, I do have a question. Of the 4,000 new and renewed permits, what's the breakdown? How many are new?
I don't have that number directly in front of me, but I believe it was, last year, there was between 400 and 500 new applicants.
So roughly 10% to 12%.
Yeah. We are currently going through all our old records. I'm trying to establish a better statistical reporting to be able to capture these things going forward of, because if somebody, if there's new applicants, and then if somebody is out of the system and lets their stuff expire, they are considered a re-applicant. If they're out of the industry for more than three years, it's, we're trying to get different areas when people are coming back, and especially with the pandemic and everything that happened, we've had some people actually be out for several years and all of a sudden start coming back in. So I am trying to grab those numbers going forward to have a better understanding of how many different types there are because there isn't just new applicants and renewals where there's a lot of little caveats that go off in.
Five staff people. What's an average day low and high of number of people?
Between 40 and 60 people come through there.
And maybe an unfair question for you, not an unfair question for everyone. Do we think technology can bridge the gap between five people? And, you know, five people seems like.
Could I, could I, could I answer that?
Thank you.
Could I answer that question in another way?
Yeah, I mean, that's like 12 people.
I have, I have, I have a surplus, and what someone tells me is that the way to get the surplus down is to add additional employees. So I am in the process with all my managers in terms of asking the question, what do you see the agency looking like in five years? What is staffing requirements that the agency is going to have in five years? So I can begin that process of the restaffing that we need to do, as you know how long it takes the personnel to get that major, starting that, that, that process now, especially I have to do it now because this year is a budget building year. So since the budget building year, I have to build all this stuff into the budget so that for future years, we don't go backwards because right now, we're trying to build back up to where we were before. I need additional enforcement people, I need additional people in licensing, I need additional people in audit, I don't have an audit section in this particular, I need that. I need additional dispatchers, I need additional people in inspections in terms of what we're going to do. So that is what I'm looking at in terms of trying to build out our bench. And also, one of the things that we also have to deal with is that, I was told in the meeting that we had at the beginning of the week, is that we seem to be within BNI losing between three, four, to five employees in the division per month in terms of people going to other opportunities and things of that nature. So every time you get to the point of having someone on the payroll that is working for you and things of that nature, they find another opportunity, and they may go because the state is constantly shifting around, and other opportunities are shifting around to people having opportunities to go other places. So every time you get someone that you think is going to stay a little while, then you're not. It's not on them, it's on us in terms of us creating an environment where people want to stay and the people, the people believe that's a place in which they want to. So that's something that we have to do, but we also have to take into account that people are mobile, and that's something, that's something, that's something we all have to deal with, and I can't be upset about that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want, so I think you might have meant to say that this year is a base year, next fiscal year is the budget bill.
Yeah, budget year.
But just to clarify, it's not as easy as the administrator just adding new people, and I think you didn't, you weren't granted any new personnel in the last legislative session, were you?
We got, we got the deputy administrator position as.
That's a conversion.
It was, it was a conversion, but we had to go to the legislature to get it. No actual new positions because the budget was built before I got there that I was stuck with what was there at that particular point. That's the reason why within the next biennium, I really will speak.
So, so that's what I wanted to clarify. In his answer, it sounds like you're already intending to ask for people in the 2025 session.
Yes, and also, we also are thinking of the possibility of adding those people through the Internal Finance Committee because they will allow us to do that too if we can get the MPD-19s together and things of that nature and show them the position. As you, as you, as you know, we have to go through personnel and the legislature positions built. That's something that, that's a, that's a process that we're going to have to go through. It's an arduous process, but a process that we must be moved to forward.
I do think we have to pursue the, to optimize technology because if you have five front office people and they're processing up to 12 people per day, you can figure out how much time they actually have to spend with something. Not very much. So, yeah, to the extent we can use technology to make that, to bridge that gap, I think it'd be helpful.
Oh, I think you're going to have to show if you go to IFC, but, definitely IFC, but in the 2025 session, that technology implemented.
Didn't get everything.
Got you in this current state in which you're justifying an ask for people.
We only could close the gap 40%.
Right.
Need to close the gap 40%. Because we do have to do something, I know the administration fears this, we do have to do something, try to streamline the process so that people can get, we can get work as fast as possible.
And just.
Without doing injury to the public interest of making sure that we have qualified people behind me.
And just to add from my experience at the agency, you rarely have five people on the counter at the same time. You've got people taking days off, you've got people sick. I remember when I was the administrator, we had a COVID outbreak and the entire line was down for three days. So there are those issues as well, along with the backend work that has to be done. It's not customer interface, all of that kind of, I just wanted to add that in.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. Yeah. Any further questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Administrator Armstrong, yeah. In Portland. We had a total of 1,079,026 monthly trips in the month of July 2023. That compares to 1,121,000 trips, 162 for 2022, so we're down a little bit in terms of that because we have been averaging up to this point about 1.2 million rides per month. We're down about maybe 200,000 rides. I don't know the answer to the question as to why, what that situation is, but that's something that I need to inquire about as to why we're down, and is there something we can do in order to help with that?
It's too hot in Las Vegas. I'm the tourist here now.
Or to live here.
So that will that will uptick and I told you, right?
That would be one's hope.
We still have an increased average in terms of our employee revenue per trip of $20.56 per trip versus 1909 and 2022. So we're going in the right direction in terms of that.
The revenues holding even though.
Yes, yeah, right. Combined trip comparisons, it looks like in terms of 2023, we're still ahead of the 2022 year, the 2022 was still a rebuilding year, so we're doing better in that issue. Our revenues are still a little positive in terms of what we're talking about in terms of that, maybe other revenue sources and things of that nature. But we're we're still doing okay in terms of what we're talking about. I think that we probably can do better. But the question being is that are we at capacity or are there other things that we can do in order to reach that? We still have the same number of medallions because this board is the group that does that. We have 3,530 medallions and that's what we have active at this particular point. We have 1,086 lease medallions that are presently in use. The number of rides requested by the elderly, it looked like elderly and disabled went down a little bit from the same time in June of 2023, 1,076,522, 1,038,116. We hope that we are serving the disabled only population as well as we can. We have not received a lot of complaints from that community as to our service in that in that area, but we will check that in terms of saying that we are serving that area as professionally as we need to. Credit card transactions are down a little bit, down about 2.73%, but that may be people may be using cash, cash may be at this particular point. We have a total of in July, 747 different types of calls that we had relative to the dispatcher. In terms of citations and things of that nature, what I have to say about that is that you're looking you're looking at the hearing officer for the Taxi Cab Authority at this particular point. So to a certain extent, I with my other duties, I also have to take on that duty until we can staff up the position of attorney in the new agency at this particular point. So that's something I'm working towards. So I'm trying to hear as much as I can while that process is going on. That also that process is also dealt with in terms of the personnel process. And also that affects in terms of the impound that we can do with that particular point. The impounds are usually Monday, Tuesdays because those are usually taking place in terms of things of that nature that is happening between Friday and Sunday. We may want to move those around a little bit, especially the ones that make different crazes and things of that nature because we can probably better schedule those as opposed to having them just then we go out and we ask things in terms of Friday or Sunday night, which is the busy times that we have in terms of the industry. Of course, most of the citations are dealing with safety and convenience and those are basically violating the traffic laws. And that's the end of my report. If anybody has any questions.
Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong, do we as an authority track some of the these stats on the Uber and Lyft side?
We do not. They are they are managed by the
Yes.
By the NTA.
Sorry, regulators.
They're regulated by the NTA. The only time that we would come in contact with Uber or Lyft is if they're acting off the app and we have to impound them. That's the only time we would come in contact with Uber or Lyft. We don't come in contact if they're in any.
Just wondering if they've experienced some of the same reductions in in monthly trips as well, so I wanted to see if there was some sort of comparison.
I do not know, but I could bite out.
Be interesting just to see if it's affecting them as well. Additionally, on the type of calls page slide, I noticed the assault, there were 272. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that? Is that assault on our drivers or is that assault on our passengers?
I think it's a I think it's a little bit of both in terms of what we're talking about. One of the things that is being looked at at this particular point, both through us and the NTA, is that the federal government is interested in this particular point in terms of the number of assaults. We seem to be seeing that there's an uptick of assaults on our drivers relative to what is happening. So they're asking us to garner statistics dealing with that issue. I'm going to garner those statistics both through our internal sources as well as garnering those statistics through the industry in order to see what we can do to better limit the number of assaults to drive. Maybe that means additional staffing in terms of what we need to do in terms of that. But that's something that we're going to have to look into because I think that it's getting a little bit more raucous out there than it has been in the past, but that's a concern.
That's actually the you're down one. It's actually 272 accidents, two assaults.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, because I thought.
I read it the same way. I was going to ask the same question.
Yeah, but the but the assaults are.
That's 17.
Assaults are assaults are assaults are up.
Thank you for clarifying.
No, I got concerned.
I need to bring my readers.
Assaults are up and that's something that we need to look at in what's going to happen.
And last question, can you increase the font on some of this?
Are you you have not visited your optometrist lately?
I have, I forgot my readers.
I did. She told me not to read font this morning.
I don't think my readers will help with this. Thank you.
We will try to increase the font.
Thank you.
I was going to say, could you reduce the number of pages?
No.
I do have to, yes. I might suggest with that seems like an incredible number of assaults, which I thought it was too, but it also seems like an incredible number of accidents. And so I noticed that the safety and convenience citations are down.
Are down.
And maybe maybe that's a good focus for enforcement is making sure that the obeyed traffic laws happening with that many accidents. My other I wanted to point out, you've got a very good ratio of paid or waived before says waived before hiring, but I think that means before hearing.
Hearing, yes.
So you've got 62 60 citations with almost half of those being waived or paid before hearing that. That's a program that I think is very valuable because it prevents a hearing officer from having to hear all those cases. Also, if you need assistance on hearing cases, I might refer you to the NTA Commissioners, maybe Hearings Division or the Department of Administration.
Mr. Gruber and yeah, both of them, both of them have offered us, we've asked you both to use the hearing officer for the eye as well as some of the commissioners at NTA graciously lead and have done some hearings for us too.
So the other thing I would ask is, I've got a couple things, two more. With the gas price fluctuations, has there been any changes in the rate?
No, not this time. And also, as you know, when you approved the the few not the fuel surcharge, but you approved the new rates, tier one is included within that rate. So the next tier would go up in terms of you have you would have to go to tier two in order for that to happen. That's one of the one of the situations. So it's kind of better now that we have the the rate increase because now it's easier to deal with the fuel surcharge issue.
Okay, and then last, we proposed a couple of legislative changes back about a year ago and then also I know the Sunset Subcommittee made a recommendation to the legislature on reviewing the chapter 706 as it pertains to taxis. Did we did we get anything passed in relation to that?
Yeah, what happened with the 706 review was that it passed the assembly, but it died in the Senate. So I'm not quite sure exactly where we are in terms of in terms of that situation, whether we're still back on the Sunset Committee, but we're still going to go through the process that we need to go through in order to revise our statutes because they still need to be done. Whether we have legislative mandate to do it or not, that's something that I think the governor wants done and that's something that we need to do as an agency.
Well, it's something that we were working on prior to the Sunset Subcommittee, actually, we had a work group that was.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure that didn't get lost. And then we we proposed some changes.
We did propose two changes.
Right.
Minimum changes.
Got no traction?
We got no traction.
All right, thank you.
That's it. Yeah, not that they should die.
Right.
Just have to keep them alive in a different way.
It's what you're spitting around.
Well, they just be stuck into the more global.
Yes.
But yeah, my understanding in that space from recent conversations is that whether the legislature moves forward with an examination, I think the administration will be working or going forward with modernization for both NTA and TA.
Ah, okay.
Stay well out of that.
And and whether that means consolidation or not, I don't think that should just not be approached with me, but they have approached this topic of needing to, whether the legislature will step up, the administration thinks it needs to. Okay. What happens?
I have one question, one I tend to usually ask, where are we with recruitment? How many vacant positions you got?
I have a loaded question right now. Because of personnel problems, first personnel problems, and the personnel problems I'm talking about is not personnel problems with any agency personnel problems with the personnel division in terms of getting stuff through and things of that nature. We also have some issues and I talked to Mr. Decker about this is that because of the problems in implementing the 12% pay increase for all state employees, it created a budget a budgetary staff rule relative to the entire state. No budget in the state could absorb a 12% increase across the board because that money was not that money was allocated, but was not put into our particular budget. So what we have to do is now go back, put that money back into our individual budgets, but that created a situation in which the positions that we have were holding open or trying to fill at that particular point because at this particular point, I'm down dispatcher, I'm down inspector, I'm down at this particular point, in order to get even to enforcement personnel, I'm down a licensed person because that person is leaving on Thursday. So I'm down in terms of the number of people and these these situations are within certain places within personnel. But because of the budget issue, because budget has to approve the positions and filling the positions, we have been told that the soonest that we can move forward on these is October. So I have to follow whatever my bosses tell me at this particular point in terms of whether we can do that. We're hoping sooner because I'm trying to implore them that these are these are these are critical hires and these hires need to be made. But I can only get so far.
I understand. I don't know if any of that's true, but if it is, my guess is that they're attempting to pay for the increased head of salary savings by keeping the positions vacant, but I don't.
Yes, that's what that's what's happening, yes. They usually do that at like the increase from like 4% or something like that. Salary savings can usually absorb that, but a 12% hit is not something that any of our budgets can absorb. Thank you.
Gee, that was.
Yeah.
More than I expected, but it is what it is.
Anything else on statistical reports? Legal counsel, anything to report?
Nothing.
I will report that we did amend, did amend because we had an internal consistency on number of days between the fuel surcharge order and general rate case order. So I signed a very brief amendment to that. Just there was a 30-day and a
14-day.
14-day and they were for the same thing, so threw them up. That's. Um, future agenda. I have one that I would like for next month. So as you recall, we did a general rate case earlier this year, which I think helped reset the fact that we hadn't been doing annual reviews and there had been a lengthy period of time, seven years, as I recall, since the last general rate case. But we do have a statutory requirement to do an annual rate review and we had basically not been doing that because we were expecting to get a general rate case and encouraging a general rate case. I'd like to put on the agenda administrator next month to take comment and have a discussion of how we want what kind of metrics and information we want from staff or the industry when we get to the general or to the annual rate review, you know, just so that we give our input, we give some direction as to how we want that information to come to us in the spring. And that may entail us having to enter some kind of a supplemental order as to what we want provided, maybe statistics we want provided. So unless anybody has concerns about that, I put that on so we get that process well for the marketable time period that we typically.
I don't have any objections, but I have a recommendation for the administrator in that this board nor nor the agency is is as good as the industry at figuring out what it costs to operate a cab. So I might demand and make sure that you're using the same data or their data for that presentation.
Right, and and I suspect this will also give the industry an opportunity to come to the table and say, this is how we think it should be. Allow us to say them good, give us that paper. And then will you pick another department division function for us to hear about?
Yes, you got you got you got you got to mail it for the next six months.
I think that's there's not that many sections in the agency.
Yes, so for member Decker, this may not be an education, but for the rest of us, and I'm going to be candid. There's a couple of other agencies that I work in front of that the new new heads of those agencies are doing the same thing and as you're sitting there in the audience, you go, now this is pretty enlightening to figure out what their take is about what it is that they're doing. And and then gives us an opportunity to make suggestions and ask questions. Good, thank you. Anything else, other agenda items? Okay. That will conclude agenda item five. That takes us to the agenda item six, which is our second public comment session. This matter is on our agenda pursuant to the open meeting law and is time for members of the public who wish to address this on matters within our jurisdiction. We can take no action on those items, but we welcome any comments that are not profane, vulgar, or abusive.
Mario.
You're out, Mario.
Mario Kocci, Deluxe Taxi, General Manager. First off, Jay, the the accidents. Half of those are probably cab on cabin pit if you've been in there. It takes and it's not even pain exchange. I mean, they label those as accidents. Second, I speak on my behalf, I'm pretty sure they're going to say the same thing. For every two at fault, we'll probably have eight, nine that are not at fault because if you drive on the strip, every inch counts. And as soon as a taxi cab puts his turn signal, because I drove for 17 years, that's called boxing in. They're not going to let you in. You're a cab. And I couldn't go back to that. I was making more money back then than they are making today and that's our problem. That's our major problem. Second off, about the English, since I'm a second language too. The only English, most 90% of TA officers could tell is when they do something incorrect. Up until then, they were speaking fine. I mean, I mean, it's it's when I catch him in there, it's like all of a sudden you forgot English, you did this wrong, you know, and and all of a sudden they forgot English. That's probably 85% of the time. But my my point that I'm really.
Thank you for the candid.
My my point I want to make is the third one and it's fingerprints. If we change this up, because I do have a lot of friends in the industry, for them to get it back from Metro, it takes weeks, weeks and weeks. Are we still going to keep where you guys give them the permit until you get the fingerprint?
Yes, we do.
Okay, that's what I want to clear. Because if you go digital. Because if you go digital.
Yeah, we give them a tab, we give them a temp, we give them a temp for 90.
All right.
And it takes 90 to get them back and then hopefully usually it's back in about 45.
I was thinking if you throw that in there.
So we're going to call them in.
Okay.
Once we get them back and then say yes or no.
Because I was having this discussion with supervisor Dero back, there was like, half of the guys I put through, by the time I finished training, they disappeared. And it's like, I didn't know, do I need to go back in the system and tell TA, hey, they never finished training, but then we checked and they never went through the whole process. So it's really tough.
But I don't, I, just to make sure I'm understanding, if we're using the gaming control ward model, these are private service, for-profit services that are taking the prints.
Yeah, we take it, yeah.
And they are motivated. That's why the gaming control ward went through this process and not using county sheriffs, not using themselves, they're just using these private services that go in and.
They submit electronically directly to.
That's right. It's, it's an electronic process writing to the FBI.
So it'll be faster.
So it moves much faster.
It, it does. You're, you're right. But the, the delay is generally not on the, the entity that's taking the fingerprints. The delay is the FBI is backed up to how long.
That's the issue.
They, they send the results when they can, but I will say, most licensing agencies that I'm aware of, and I've run five of them, uh, do not allow a temp permit pending the return of the FBI fingerprints. So that's, that's actually pretty good for, for this industry because, uh, most agencies.
Just a reminder, we're doing the public meeting discussion.
Oh, no action, right? We can't discuss?
No.
Because I wanted, okay, then can I clarify something with the administrator while Mario is sitting there?
Yes.
Okay. So it occurs to me, uh, after hearing Mario's comments, that if I remember right, we were not taking accident reports, we being the agency, and then we began taking accident reports. Could that account for the increase in the number of reg, of accidents on your stats?
Possibly. Uh, we take accident reports on anything but, even with bumper taps and things of that nature, because it, it's created a situation in which it comes through dispatch and since it comes through dispatch, they're the ones that, that sheet that you have, those are things that come through dispatch. So dispatch is the one that categorizes those things in terms of type of calls and types of situations they get. Dispatch handles mostly the bumper taps and things of that nature. Uh, if there's no, and minor accidents, they handle those too, so that we don't have to send an inspector out in order to bring line of cars and things of that nature. So we created that situation so that we could get more cars back on the road as quickly as possible, as opposed to having to send either an inspector out or sending an enforcement investigator out in order to, you know, clear the car. Hopefully that system is working halfway decent in terms of what we're talking about, trying to get more of your cars back on the road as quickly as possible, especially the minor stuff.
Well, it's working very well. It's, it's working very well. It just gets counted as, you know?
Yeah, but, but, but the problem is to count, to count, to count, even small damage is counted as, as an accident in terms of.
I think even no damage gets counted in there because it's declared through the pictures and photos and emails.
Right.
And if I remember right, it's been a while, when I was the administrator, the agency had stopped taking accident reports for a long time, staffing or something. I'm not sure if that.
That was probably, that was probably true.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Good morning. Desiree Dante on behalf of Lucky, Western and Nellis. I'm just wondering, being that the drivers now have to get their own fingerprints, what's the new cost of the permit? Is it $91 going to go down?
It's going to go down because the only part of the fee that we're going to do is the part that deals with our part, the, that part, the fingerprint part, like 5125, that is not going to be something that we, that will be collected by the private concern.
So what is the new permit cost?
$40.
$40 at our location, yes.
And then, um, just to kind of remind everybody, why trips may be down the F1 paving? It's taken approximately 50 minutes to go from the airport to Venetian. So across our companies, we're all seeing a huge decline in trips.
Do you have any way we can fix that?
There's no open roads. So that's probably a big reason for the downturn in trips.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Uh, is there any member of the public participating electronically that wants to make comment? Seeing none, that will conclude our second public comments session. Takes us to agenda item seven, comment. Motion. Don't move. Second, that motion been moved and second, that we adjourn. All those in favor?
Right.
So done.
Yeah, actually, you ran it out.